As we gather here today as members of Tiffin City Council, we hope that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to our fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in these areas and on those upon which future generations can build with confidence, let us continue to strive to make a better world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Monsour.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Reisner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Thank you. With the record show, all seven members of council are present. August 7th, 2023, regular and committee of the whole meetings minutes were distributed. Any questions, corrections, deletions? So we'll stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reisner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Monsour.
No report, Madam President.
Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. A street sidewalks and sewers committee meeting was held on August 14th, 2023 at 5:30 PM onsite at Heidelberg University's Walker Street Vacation Petition 23- 2023-01 and alley vacation petitions 2023-02 and 2023-03. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Kenneth Jones, Kevin Reisner, Daniel Perry, and Chris Monsour, along with City Councilmember John Spar, City Law Director Brent Howard, Mayor Don Yanantuno, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, City Engineer Matt Watson, Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner, and a member of the public, Lee Wilkinson. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss Heidelberg University's Walker Street Vacation Petition and alley vacation petitions, all in the first ward, mayor's request for legislation 23-36 and 23-37, and any other business that may come before them. Item one. Watson gave information about the petition. The petitions. Heidelberg owns all of the land surrounding the potential street and alley vacations. Heidelberg is planning to build a field house at the location. It would need the vacations to tear down the homes currently on site to have enough space to build. Heidelberg has been working with the city administration on the project. Also, a sixteen and a half foot wide alley between Walker Street and Main Street is to become a road extension of Walker. There are several utility lines within the areas, including an interceptor sewer, and it would be on Heidelberg to pay to reroute the public utilities. The zoning permit is contingent on the vacations being approved. Monsour asked if the area was in the floodplain. Watson confirmed everything being built is outside of the floodplain. Heidelberg has submitted a preliminary plat, but the final plat has not been submitted yet. Watson's preference is that council not approve the vacations until Heidelberg has received approval of the final plat and gone through the planning commission process. Monsour asked about the timeline for the plat to be submitted and approved. Watson said he wasn't sure, but it would be helpful to know from the applicant. Once through the process, the plat will be sent out to private utility companies for their feedback. Howard agreed that it could be beneficial to run this process parallel to the plating process, but if plans have not been approved by the planning commission, to hold off on actually passing the legislation and potentially table the matter until such time as the plans are approved. Excuse me. Perry had no issue with the vacation, but agreed that it would be beneficial to wait to vacate until the plat is approved. Monsour suggested the committee invite the applicant to the next committee meeting held on August 21st, 2023, and move up the time to 6:15 PM. The committee paused the meeting at 5:52 PM and agreed to meet back at council chambers to continue the meeting and discuss the next agenda items. The committee reconvened at 6:02 PM in council chambers with all previous attendees except Councilmember John Spar. Burner gave the committee information about the need to apply for an Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC loan and/or grant to improve certain sewer lines in the River View Estates area without having to replace them completely. The potential project is estimated to cost around $1.5 million. Burner informed council that sewer revenue typically allows for $1 million in capital improvements to or to buy equipment. Monsour motioned to have the law director prepare a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission revolving loan grant program. Too many words tonight. For sewer rehabilitation in 2024, to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. The motion was seconded by Reisner. The motion passed five to zero. Dutro reiterated information presented by Raph Telus at the previous council meeting. The annual increase will happen in January. Perry motioned to have the law director prepare an ordinance amending and increase the sewer rates to 5%. Monsour seconded the motion. The motion passed five to zero. Perry received a complaint from two residents on Mohawk Street about rumpkey driving onto the sidewalks. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:29 PM.
Thank you. Who assigned all that to you committee?
Sorry.
Somebody not very nice. Any questions for Councilmember Thacker on the report? Law Director.
Yeah, just a comment. Based on the committee meeting tonight, I think that under item one, second paragraph, I don't believe that Heidelberg has submitted a plat.
Yeah.
So I think that more accurately, it's Heidelberg has submitted site plans for the project to the city, but has not started the plating process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the whole, does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay. We are under reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Don Yanantuno.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Chief Pauli is with us to hand out some special service awards, and so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Pauli.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I just, I want to start off by saying I very much appreciate you giving me the forum and the opportunity to recognize first responders. As you know, first responders are not attention seekers. They're not looking for pats on the back. They're not looking for that recognition. However, one of the things that I wanted to do when I became chief was to make sure that we recognized our first responders when they did great work. And we had two very crazy incidents in June that I'd like to talk about today. And so again, thank you for giving this opportunity to all of us. Officer Andrew Stevens, will you come forward, please? You go in here and stand right up front there in the well. On June 25th, 2023, Tiffin officers were dispatched to the area of Riverside Drive Viaduct for a report of an individual struck by a train. Officer Andrew Stevens responded to the scene and quickly began coordinating all responding officers to help locate the victim. Officers Caden Woosher and Elizabeth Miller responded to assist. Once the victim was located, Officer Stevens alerted Tiffin Fire and Rescue Personnel to the location and got them to the scene quickly. Officer Stevens provided stabilizing care of the neck and spine to the individual, preventing additional injury. This quick action should be recognized as a key element in giving this individual a chance to live. This incident highlights the incredible dedication and swift response of Officer Andrew Stevens. His quick coordination and decisive actions were instrumental in locating the victim, alerting medical personnel, and providing critical care that helped prevent further injury. By stabilizing this individual's neck and spine and facilitating their prompt medical attention, Officer Stevens played a pivotal role in giving the victim a chance to survive. This award recognizes Officer Stevens' exceptional efforts in a life-threatening situation where his actions directly contributed to saving another person's life. His commitment to his duty and his ability to remain composed under pressure are truly commendable and exemplify the highest standards of service in law enforcement. Officer Stevens, your dedication to preserving life in the face of adversity reflects the highest ideals of this profession and serves as an example of exceptional service to this community. Thank you, Officer Andrew Stevens. All right. If Lieutenant Jason Windsor, Sergeant Jared Watson, Officer Brent Riley, and paramedic Christopher East could come forward, please. We're missing one person. Officer Rachel Stafford's on vacation, so she could not be here, however, she'll be recognized with this award as well. On June 27th of this year, Tiffin Police received a call in reference to a child abduction incident from Wood County. Lieutenant Windsor, who was off duty at the time, located the vehicle and contacted the Tiffin Police Dispatch with the location and then followed it in his personal vehicle until Mark Cruisers could arrive. At the same time, unbeknownst to each other, Seneca County EMS Echo Unit Paramedic Christopher East also observed the vehicle and called the location into the sheriff's office, and he also began to follow the vehicle. Seneca County Deputy Brydenbaugh and Tiffin Officer Rachel Stafford caught up to the vehicle and attempted to stop it when it rapidly took off and went off the road crashing into a house. The driver of the vehicle was reported to have been armed with a handgun. I don't want to get too far into the weeds with details as what transpired, as this is a pending case, but I will say this. With no thoughts about their own safety, as visibility into the vehicle was difficult due to the airbag deployment, Officer Stafford, Officer Brent Riley, Sergeant Jared Watson, and Lieutenant Jason Windsor, along with paramedic Christopher East and Deputy Brydenbaugh, all worked to get the vehicle open, extricate the infant to render care, as well as secure the driver. I would be remiss if I did not also recognize those responding to the scene from our Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division to assist with medical care of both child and driver. All these folks displayed excellent teamwork, tenacity, courage, and professionalism while dealing with one of the most heinous crimes to occur inside the city of Tiffin in a very long time. The award recognizes the exceptional efforts of police officers, medical personnel, dispatchers, and others who have demonstrated remarkable courage and dedication in the line of duty. In essence, this award seeks to honor those who exhibit a level of gallantry, selflessness, and commitment that surpasses the normal expectations of their duties. Their actions serve as an inspiration to their fellow officers and community, showcasing the highest ideals of law enforcement and contributing to the greater good. Lieutenant Windsor, Sergeant Watson, Officer Riley, Officer Stafford, and paramedic Christopher East, thank you for what you've done and congratulations. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, would Dispatch Supervisor Candy Cunningham come Will you go up into the well for me? I know you love that. This department commendation is to extend my sincerest appreciation for your exceptional response and professionalism during the two recent critical events I just spoke about. Dispatch Supervisor Cunningham's response to both of these incidents was nothing short of exceptional. Candy, you immediately sprang into action, coordinating the emergency response with precision and ensuring that all relevant personnel were alerted promptly. Your quick thinking, composure, and dedication to duty were instrumental in managing these critical events with efficiency and precision. These incidents are undoubtedly challenging situations, both requiring swift and coordinated responses. Your clear communication and accurate relay of information were vital in ensuring the safety of Tiffin Police Officers and Tiffin and Fire Rescue Division personnel. Your ability to keep everyone informed and on the same page contributed to a well-coordinated response in each of the incidents I already named, minimizing additional potential risks and ensuring a swift resolution. On behalf of the Tiffin Police Department, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your outstanding service during both of these challenging events. Your actions have undoubtedly made a significant impact on the lives of those involved, and your unwavering dedication to duty reflects the highest standards of our profession. Please accept this departmental commendation as a token of our appreciation for your exceptional response, professionalism, and compassion. Your service to the community is invaluable, and we are immensely proud to have you as a member of our team. Dispatch Supervisor Candy Cunningham, congratulations and thank you. And that concludes my awards. Thank you very much for allowing me to do this.
Well, don't go too far.
Okay.
While we have you here, we thought it would be rather fitting to follow up on the project that we started a few months ago with the Qantas Club of Seneca County on getting a police K-9 officer. And so they are here tonight to share the great news about what they have raised total. So Randy, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, City Council, for having us back again this evening, Seneca County, Qantas Club. Just want to say, just a few short months ago, I was here asking and seeing your interest of spearheading this project of raising $10,000 to obtain a police dog, along with training for Liz Miller to be trained, and getting the car ready for the dog as well. And you guys basically said yes, Qantas Club of Seneca County, please take on that project and best wishes. So I'm so happy to report that that was just a few months ago, and we have hit that goal plus with the exceptional help of Liz Miller. And she did, she did a great job at assisting on raising funds, as well as all the members of our club. We sold T-shirts, but 95% of the money, 99% of the money came from just the community and donating. So it was, they're just, it was overwhelming. It was, it was very neat to see the funds come in with just a simple ask of the community. So I think we can all be proud of that, to be part of Tiffin and get those people and organizations to donate and businesses, and they will be recognized publicly on Facebook and whatnots and in the newspaper. We'll get those people out there and recognized. So with that being said, I'd like to present tonight to Chief Pauli and the Tiffin Police Department and Liz Miller, a check for $30,770.54.
First of all, thank you very much, Qantas Club of Seneca County. The people and the businesses and the organizations, to include the Qantas Club of Seneca County, are just nothing short of spectacular. They, obviously, they, they killed the goal. All of you together killed the goal, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. It's been since 2018 that we've had a K-9 program in the city of Tiffin and at the police department. And so this was to just get us jumpstarted, and you did so much more than that. And so I just want to thank the mayor for being probably the biggest cheerleader for this program that we have. Tiffin are the Qantas Club of Seneca County, and again, all the people, organizations, and businesses that contributed to this. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Don't let Liz go anywhere.
Now, I just want to stress, no city funds were used for this. I paid for it myself. We had actually done a trip to Vermillion, so Main Street, USA, city just like Tiffin, and they have a pet store. And their pet store is a nonprofit and give all funds to humane society. So how appropriate for me to find things for the new puppy. And so, the people will get a ticket. Probably this one? Oh, yeah. Sure, they're appropriate to make sure and donate. And that was a gift from the store, so they don't support it if you haven't donated. I got a big one.
I just want to make sure you ice it on a little bit.
It's red one.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, they keep asking, the dog does not technically have a name. She is allowed to pick the name, and she has not decided yet.
I have not. I'm going to training, I leave September 17th, so by then I will have a name.
We had hoped to have your picture up there tonight, but technology is not working for us. So I do have a picture of the dog that I'll pass around. It's adorable. Very cool dog. Would you like to tell them about the dog?
It's a 12-month-old Belgian Malinois. Right now, his name is Leo, but I need to pick the name if I want to change it. So hopefully, I'll have the name within the next week or so, and that way we can publicly say what it is and let everyone know. I just want to say thank you to the community and everyone for supporting us and getting everything back up and going for us, and we're excited for it.
And we cannot thank you enough for all your sweat equity that you have put in above and beyond. We know that you're very much committed to this project, and we really appreciate that also. So thank you for attending, because I know you're on duty.
Yes.
But appreciate you. Let this fall over for a little bit, and thank you so much for all you guys do. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Guess I'm good.
Now, Liz, since the whole Qantas Club pretty much is sitting out there, would you like to get a picture of all of them? I should have probably got it with Chief Pauli, too. Hey, Chief, Chief, do you want to come back in for a picture with the club?
Sure.
Since quite a few of them are in attendance tonight.
Where do you want to go?
Not sure.
They can all stand, and I'll just stand with them.
Yeah.
I might have to stand on a chair. All right.
People who aren't, get out of the picture.
Move this.
Oh, there's the dog.
Oh, good, he's finally up on the screen.
Daddy, hold her.
There we go.
You're still in paramedic, sir.
No, I'm not, Paul. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
And since they are all here, could we give another hand for the Qantas Club of Seneca County? Thank you, former council member Steve Leopard, for big supporter of all this for years, and thank you for coming in tonight to also launch it forward. So, good to see everyone. And so as I keep telling everybody, do not get used to this. That is my report, short and sweet for a change tonight, so.
I'm going to hold you, too.
And a lot of people leave after this, so you can, if you want to.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
I'm not calling on you.
Thank you, everyone.
They are going.
I saw this in my pocket.
Ashley, hand that to Kathy.
Is that the actual check, the real check?
They forgot to hand over the Qantas portion of the check.
Clerk of Counsel Ian Forrest. You and Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have the financial report for July 2023. Total receipts for the month were $3,648,117.60. Total expenses for the month were $4,236,443.16. The general fund unencumbered balance is $5,170,829.16. Income tax receipts for July 2023 were $1,1,545.95. The total annual increase in income tax receipts for July 2023 when compared to July 2022 was $169,549.53. Year-to-date, we are still down a little bit, 1.11%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for July was $122,287.78. The unexpendated balance for all funds is $37,608,848.91, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner.
I move to accept the Finance Director's report in bank reconciliation month ending July 31st.
Thank you. There's a motion to accept the Finance Director's report for the month of July in bank reconciliation. Is there a second?
A second.
Or Mansour, sorry. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Director of Finance Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you.
Director of Law, sorry.
On Friday, the 14th, this past Friday, the city closed on the sale of Lot 3 at Eagle Rock Business Park to AFLP Lot 3 LLC, a related organization to the party designated on the ordinance. As you may recall, we put FLP LLC or their designee, and so they designated a related company to actually take title. So the city has received the proceeds, net proceeds of the sale, which are approximately We also closed on the option that we granted to that entity for Lot 2 for potential development. And the FLP LLC also closed on the purchase of Lot 1, which is the spec building that the city had sold to Development Solutions a couple of years ago. And we will receive the proceeds of the payoff of the note that was related to that sale, and we'll receive that tomorrow, and that amount is $184,808. So in grand total, we will receive, as a city, a little less than $258,000. That money will go into the Economic Development Fund of the city for future use as appropriated by City Council. And you'll see some activity at the spec building. There's going to be further work done by the developer. And then also on Lot 3, that development of that property will be supporting what is going on in the spec building. So I think, again, you'll be seeing some activity and some job opportunities for the community, and I'm sure that there'll be further reports about the details of their development. But all went as planned. Any questions? Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Promise not to call you that again. Sorry. Okay, we are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have Finance Director's request for legislation number F-23-25 to amend the 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 in order to allow for additional funds to be appropriated in the budget for the municipal court.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F-23-25 has been prepared tonight as Ordinance 23-52.
And we have Finance Director's request for legislation number F-23-26 to amend the 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-101 to appropriate funds into the police and park budgets.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-23-26 has been prepared as Ordinance 23-53.
And additionally, today I received a letter from the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities dated August 17th regarding the application for the issuance of licenses for three persons with, I can't say it tonight, developmental disabilities at the ECI Beachwood Address at 35 Beachwood Drive.
This application will be referred to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Sure. All right. We are now under motions. Any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 23-27 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 23-27.
Resolution number 23-28 introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, revolving loan/grant program for sewer rehabilitation in 2024 to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 23-28.
Ordinance number 23-54, I'm sorry, -51 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into a discretionary investment management agreement for professional management of various city funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-51. Councilmember Reisner.
I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 23-51, suspending City Council's three-reading rule.
Thank you.
And I, oh, I have a comment, too.
Go for it.
I did check around with all the other cities of similar size and the references for this, and this is going to be a home run. They're all giving stellar reviews for this, and the Finance Director should be commended on bringing this up with us. This is great.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 23-51. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-51 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-54 introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance amending Sections 907.07D and E of Tiffin codified ordinances, increasing the annual percentage increase in sewer rates to 5%.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-52.
Ordinance number 23-52.
I'm sorry, that was, she actually read 54.
Oh, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so confused.
I got them out of order. Yeah. I'm sorry.
I know. I was, sorry. Thank you. That's my fault, too. One more time.
Ordinance number 23-52 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate $21,850 into the municipal court budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-52. Councilmember Reisner.
I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 23-52, suspending City Council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 23-52. Is there a second? Councilmember Mansour. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-52 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-53 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate $15,425.25 into the police and park budgets.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-53. Councilmember Reisner.
I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 23-53, suspending City Council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 23-53. Is there a second?
Got a question? Am I allowed?
Sure.
These are all donations, right? Just for the, people at home know that it was all just donated? All right.
Donated funds, yes.
Gotcha. Well, then I'll second.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
And to follow up on Councilmember Mansour, thank you very much for these donations. The city appreciates them.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we will vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-53 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And then with 23-54, we have concluded the legislation.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes legislation. We are now under other business. Yes, Councilmember Mansour.
I need to schedule a meeting of the Law and Community Planning Committee. We have to have a response back to, by August 31st. So if we could maybe do something Thursday, Councilmember Perry? Because that's next Wednesday is the 31st. We have to have a response by then, so.
Thursday, next Thursday is.
This, like, this Thursday if possible, but.
Yeah, but I mean, next Thursday is the 31st.
31st, yeah.
I could do Thursday early-ish, like, four or five-ish.
I can do Thursday after 3:00.
Set it for, what's going to be best? 4:00, 4:30?
4:00 is good.
4 o'clock on Thursday?
For you, Law Director?
Is that, is that all right with everybody else? So we'll plan on having a Law and Community Planning meeting Thursday at 4:00 to discuss the ECI.
Requests.
Requests, and then any other business that comes before us.
So that's Thursday, August, I can't remember.
24.
24.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to mention, it's going to be an excruciatingly uncomfortable week heat-wise to the community and to, especially to this group. If people ask, we will have cooling centers established. They're not going to be just open. You'll have to contact the EMA office or call the Police Department Sheriff's Office, et cetera, and they'll have a list of places you can go, or a list of places you can contact. Please check on your neighbors, check on your relatives, especially on Thursday. Heat indexes, unless it changes, could be up in the low 100s, up to 105, 107 on Thursday. So keep an eye, watch your pets, make sure there's enough water, and take care of yourselves as well. But if you have any problems, give the EMA office a call. Thank you.
City Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Council President. It was requested by a council member that I provide some updated numbers for RUMKY from their collections for this year. With us just passing July, now we've got a data for more than half of the year. So I did send all of you some updated information, but I wanted to report that as of, excuse me, I'll just read off the numbers if that's all right for everyone. In January, there were 438, 438.58 tons of municipal solid waste collected and 91.94 tons of recyclables. In February, it was 352.21 tons of municipal solid waste and 72.24 recyclable tons. In March, it was 421.26 tons of waste and 73.84 tons of recyclables. In May, 494.90 tons of waste, 85.86 tons of recyclables. In June, 494.71 tons of waste, 91.72 tons of recyclables. That was also the month that we had the bulk pickup. This year, 108 tons of materials were collected at the bulk pickup. And then in July, 455.75 tons of waste, 79.59 tons of recyclables were collected. We'll get out those numbers, as well as comparisons for last year. But just as a point of reference for all council members, in comparison to last year, almost across the board, we're seeing more recyclables being collected. So all but one month, there was a higher tonnage of recyclables collected. And for the most part, most of the months, we also had lower municipal solid waste. So it appears that more people are putting their items, more people are utilizing the recycling more, and that's, I think, on balance, great news for everyone. Our tonnage was actually down this year for the bulk pickup. So last year, 134.63 tons of bulk items were picked up during that week in July, and then this year again, a little more than 100 tons in July. So just some interesting numbers. Thought it would be worthwhile to bring that to council with that information from RUMKY.
Thank you. Questions for the city administrator? Thank you, Nick. Anything else to come before council this evening? Wow. I'll do this one first. She's getting closer.
I was remiss in mentioning, when the club was here, that they've done an awesome job of selling the T-shirts, and Councilmember Leopard can see his quite easily. It's a gorgeous shirt, very soft, very comfortable. And they have unloaded all of them but 13. And so if anyone is interested, it's mostly extra-large and 2X sizes, but if anybody's interested, contact the office and we'll get you in connection with them. And they're reasonably priced at $20.23 for the larger size, so if anybody's interested, so they can finish out their project.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner.
For the ordinance 23-54 that was read tonight, yeah, this is for, you know, necessary, all the projects coming up. But I'd like to have the council consider possibly making this a temporary increase so that it has to be reviewed by next council next year, so that they can rerun the math and double-check. Maybe they need to go 6% next year if their costs go up. I'm just. costs go up. I'm just trying to keep a spotlight on this as time goes on with it. Similar to the golf carts, you know, we had a temporary, we're testing it, and this can test this, too.
So, I think that would require an amended ordinance then and open that discussion back up. What are council's thoughts, I guess, on that, or initial thoughts? I know you haven't had time to think about it. Yeah, Councilmember Perry?
I guess my initial thought is there's no reason that the council next year couldn't just look at it like we did with this. Especially, I would imagine that we will stay in contact with RevTalis and listen to their advice and stuff, where, you know, they're going to suggest, you know, what they think is best for the city. So, I'm okay with just leaving it how it is. And then, you know, maybe just for the public's benefit, you know, or next year, just making sure that we keep an eye on it. And I'm sure, you know, with how many projects we are, Watson's all over it. So, I think this is fine how it's written.
Okay. So, Law Director, so would that not need amended ordinance then to say it's, yep?
Yeah, currently, the ordinance states that there will be a 4% increase each year. The only thing that the, that's what the codified ordinance section says. What this ordinance does is it increases that annual percentage rate from 4% to 5%. So, if you would amend this ordinance, you'd have to decide what actually do you want to happen to sunset next year. Because if you say sunset the increase to 5%, then you're saying it goes back to 4%. And that may or may not be prudent. So, you need some thought into, if you really wanted to, council as a whole wants to amend this, this particular ordinance as introduced, you have to decide what position you want to be in next year. Because you're saying that it sunsets with no action, it will do something. It will return to some form. And is that prudent? Or is it, as Councilman Perry said, would it be better to allow council to naturally revisit the issue as needed based on the RevTalis, maybe their annual review of sewer rates?
With that explanation, I just want to stress, though, that we were on 5%, and we were just fine on 5%. When we dropped it down to that 4%, we put us in jeopardy of running out of money. And so, that's why warning bells were going off big time as soon as I took office last year, that we needed to do something and do something now. So, I'm really kind of concerned that we're messing with this at all, because we need that 5%. It's a $160 million project, and where are you going to get that kind of money? And so, the 5% is very crucial to keeping us on track so that we're not in trouble. And so, I would hate to see you do that. And plus, we pay extra money for RevTalis. It's not like they do this out of kindness or heart. It costs the city money every time we work with them. And so, we've got that going on, too. So, I just want to make that out.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna reevaluate this next year in July again?
Is that what our contract says?
We can have them come back to council whenever we would like. But I believe what we've already discussed, we've committed to having Joe Crea or Representative from RevTalis come back again next year to update council again. Again, they have a model, they base these figures on. So, they have it based on a 19-year timeline, which is what we had seen when they came in, which is how they got to that 5%, because they felt that was what was necessary to keep our funds solvent in the sewer fund.
Sounds like there will be attention given to it then.
Absolutely. And something, too, as well as the increase going from, from 4% to 5% does change the calendar as well. At this time, the ordinance has written that this change goes in midway through the year in March. This would now go in effect in January. So, it would also give you a little more time to play with if council decided next year in the future to change that number. Having a mid-year update is probably worthwhile and seeing how those funds are working out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on this? Any other business to come before council this evening?
I just have one question. On resolution 23-27, I was just wondering if somebody could just explain in terms.
That's referring, maybe Kathy.
I'm staring at you, but I'm just waiting for you.
Either Brennan or I.
On an annual basis, we have to give the rates, the tax rates, that, to the County Budget Commission so that we then, they can collect the real estate taxes and share those portions with us. And so, I believe that this year, the rates have not changed from last year. I believe, Kathy, isn't that right, that they're the same rates that we've done in the years past? But this allows us to receive, then, funds from the county, from their real estate tax collections.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before council this evening? All right. If nothing else, we can adjourn. Thank you all.